Um, is anyone here for open session? Sir? No? Okay. Um, announcements, what do we got? Anything?
Uh, only thing, the dingy dash which we previewed last week, talked about a little bit at town meeting was a huge success.
A housing success.
Videos, a lot of buzz, which is exactly what it's intended to create, plus it was fun. So, um, just got a lot of comments and private notes from residents saying that it was just, just a great event, they wanna participate again next year, so it's the type of thing that's gonna build rival the light fight and, and the other great events that, that Katie and her volunteers have put together, so.
Yeah, there were what, eighteen uh, entrants or something like that?
Both, yeah. Most of them went down right away, which was hilarious. Not for them, but for me.
Something like that. Yeah.
How many for the previous year? Any idea?
Eleven, I believe, eleven or twelve.
Yeah, pretty big increase, so. That's great. Um, okay, uh, new business. I guess right into it here, audit findings.
So every year, um, an audit's conducted to uh, review the town's finances and standings. Uh, we still employ Scanlon and Associates to oversee our audit. And Tom, the owner, is here to present the financial statements management letter and answer any questions the board has, but this is important for open government and for people to see that our finances are where they are and how we can improve and anything that we need to look out for.
Okay, and before you go, just I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, this meeting is being broadcast live and di- digitally report recorded, so everyone know that.
Okay.
This is Tom Scanlon?
Yeah. I wasn't here for public comment. Nice to meet everyone. Uh, I've been here in, uh, this is twelve. Jeff's usually. I think Jeff was Jeff here last year?
Yes.
Um, so the audit went well, uh, there's no surprises, uh, I think the town's in a lot better shape, uh, they've come a long way in the past seven years, um, I think your history's behind you, um, got more controls in place, uh, more monitoring, which is good, um. You know, it's an observation from the outside, I think your communication's been a lot better, uh. Amongst, you know, it's one of the observations during this year's audit that a lot of my staff noticed and I noticed, um, when we're here, so, which is always a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
The financial statements is gonna be brief, uh, the town received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get, um, going in, so, which is good, which will help you in the bond market, help you with grants, um, and all that good stuff, uh. One fi- one statement I just usually like to point out, uh, is the board, it's on page nineteen, that's a big thick one, um. I think it's always good to know like where your free cash comes from, um, within your, uh, within your budget, how it's generated, um, and this is probably like if you don't look at any other financial statement, this is probably the one to look at, on page nineteen, now you can see the first column is, uh, the amount that you carried over to the previous budget, the expense called reserve for encumbrances, um, second column's the original budget, third is your final budget, revenues up top and your expenses down at the bottom. On the column all the way over to the right is how you feared against it, and that is what produces free cash, uh, if you look on the revenue side, so your total revenues to your budget, you generated about a hundred and thirty-one thousand, um, in excess revenues of your budget went to your free cash. Of that one thirty-one, a hundred of it is from other, which that is the, um, money you receive from, uh, no, from the insurance company, um, the fraud. Um, so you're all done with that, um.
Is the solar the, uh, payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes, uh, yes, I believe it's in.
Under revenues, one through three, fourth one down?
Yes. Yes.
So that's at, uh, three thirty-three?
Yes, and there's something else in there too besides the solar.
Is there something to do with the nonprofits?
Yeah.
Uh, there's one, and then that's from, that payment lieu of taxes, the state, that doesn't account for the solar.
Okay.
So that's the state payment.
So the solar, solar's gonna be under the, uh, payment lieu of taxes, our license permits and fees at one fifty-four. Uh, you can see like the way as we look at your ambulance, uh, your budget two hundred thousand, it's like one forty-four, seeing that trend across all the Commonwealth ambulances, uh, not generating, the insurance companies aren't their rates going down reimbursement, um, so I, one thing I'd caution you going forward on estimating the local receipts is probably decrease, uh, the amount you're estimating on your ambulance. Uh, that's the, that's the one thing that really stands out in your revenues. And then on your expense side, you generated, uh, in free cash about two hundred and fifteen thousand. And again, you don't have one item like up above where you said a hundred thousand that came in, it's a nice blend across, uh, uh, return for appropriations, um, and your free cash was certified, I believe it was like four.
Four oh one.
Four oh one, um, you can see three forty-five of that is what got generated, um, in the current budget, and you had excess that rolled over about a hundred thousand, and the difference is penalties, uh, for all original accounts and stuff, about roughly about thirty-two thousand, that's how you get to the four oh one. Thing's always important, you was the management board of where free cash come from, how you use it, um, your reserves in your stabilization, your free cash, it's about one point one million, um, roughly about eleven percent of your budget, which is good, you always wanna be around the ten percent mark, um, so I'd encourage savings is, uh, good, um, reserves.
And, and not to use it for the operating budget, yes.
No, not to use it for operating budget, and if you do, have a plan on how to get off it, um, again, I think you use your free cash, just historically speaking with the town, I think you use your free cash, um, very well, you know, you're not blending out, taking the four hundred thousand, reducing the tax rate with it, um.
Right.
So.
So, just a note in here, on the revenue side, been preaching with the f- the finance committee, it's been preaching in the financial policies, the reduction in the estimated revenues, so this year we dropped them to ninety-seven percent of actual, with the goal of getting down to ninety, and that includes the ambulance receipts for nineteen, so you should s- you should see that um, pay some dividends in the next audit, which would show that we backed off that two hundred thousand dollar number and are not getting the fifty-five thousand dollar deficit, cause again, we don't generate a lot of free cash, so.
Did we back it off by twelve thousand dollars, by three percent, or?
Well, this was at two hundred, we came to one forty-four, which is negative fifty-five, we did ninety-seven percent of the one forty-four, so if we come in higher, it should be a gain instead of a loss, which could turn that number around anywhere from forty to eighty thousand, which is a lot for us.
Sounds good. Which is a great policy to have, I would encourage that, um.
Help me understand why it's negative right now.
This is from eighteen, this F Y eighteen, so we're in twenty now, last year was nineteen, this is a July ago, July and a couple of months, the balance.
But in general, why is it negative? What's the root cause?
So when you project your revenues, so when we do our budget, that top sheet that was on our budget, it says, this is how much we expect to get in.
Mm-hmm.
It's a projection, because you're really looking, when we projected eighteen months out, and then by the time we get to this time of year, it's twelve months away, to what we're actually gonna get in twenty, is what we just projected. So, you wanna be more conservative of that projection without strangling the budget. So it was negative because they said, this was a combination of town administrators and finance committees, but they said we're gonna get two hundred thousand from the ambulance, and we got a hundred and forty-four. That's why it's negative.
Okay.
I'm not.
Okay, so you basically, yeah, you're basically overestimating it to low, to lower your tax rate, basically.
More people did get sick and didn't pay their ambulance bills.
That was also the year that the, um, enterprise fund was rolled.
Sure.
So that
It's a tricky year.
Might have played with the numbers a little bit, guessing what was actually coming in for receipts.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that means, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that.
We, we, okay, there was a separate.
So the enterprise fund would have been, uh, it's a separate budget.
Okay.
You've taken money for ambulance, then you pay out for ambulance services, so it wasn't included in the operating budget, it was just another budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, they decided to roll, the town decided to roll that into the operating budget and not operate it as its own business, so to speak.
Okay.
So in that year, the transition might have not translated the projections well.
Part of the reason for that was, is in this enterprise, which was, which again, done in parallel with our operating budget, for example, the chief salary, half was in the operating budget, half was as enterprise, and people were confused constantly on what was going on, you know, just, just doing comparisons and whatnot, so over time, and as it was being depleted, it just made sense to roll it back into the operating budget and sort of do away with it, and this may be a reason why, that actually, cause I don't, I don't remember there being a disparagement like that, uh, anytime soon, but I don't think we'll see it again.
I don't.
So let's talk a little bit about this payment in lieu of taxes and the solar.
Yep.
Help me understand what's going on there.
So the pay.
I think you said payment in lieu of taxes included the solar, on the question, and then you said it didn't.
Well, yeah, I, I don't. We either put it in one or two places, either in payment lieu of tax or license permits and fees, and my guess is in license permits fees after.
Well, there, there is also a large fee, building permit fee for a solar farm, so that may be under the fees, and then the pilot might be, the pilot agreements for the solar might be under the pilot.
We can find that out, but again, the, the, the state also changed the way that they classified it as well, so that would determine how it was probably classified in here, and that's all been recent too, so we can
Yeah, I can find it, I have work papers.
figure that out, but it's in one of them.
But that's the fourth, fourth largest generator of income for the town is the payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
So I'll clarify for you, but my understanding is that's the money that we get mostly, like ninety-nine percent is the money we get from the state for the state owned land to protect the watershed.
Payment in lieu of taxes, is that?
Yeah, they'll give us a letter that says we're gonna be, we'd like to inquire, or you have a waiting period of a hundred and twenty, some sort of terminology that the D C R will send us that says, but there's eighty-seven point six acres, that's prime land for our wherever watershed that we'd like to take, and they just take, unless we make a big stink and, and we don't really have grounds for it, so for them to take it, they then give us a payment in lieu of taxes, and that's where it's reflected, based on the valuation of the land that they determine.
And each year they make a payment as a whole on all the land?
It's something we heavily monitor, because a lot of our land is tied up.
Yeah, that's the, that's the bulk of it, cause I was looking at the budgets three, 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 and payments that it's the state owned land.
Yep.
So not to, that's the three, three, eight, um.
So where's the allocation for the solar?
Maybe it's the other taxes.
Um. And
Or license permits fees.
Did that come in in two thousand eighteen, or is there a nineteen receipt?
Uh, it would've come in then too.
Cause it could be sitting in your special revenue funds.
Should be pretty substantial, cause it's what, five?
Yeah, and that's a.
Five farms. Solar farms.
Should be pretty substantial, and I would think we have it allocated.
What we're doing is.
Yeah, I have the breakout of this three, three, I can send your work papers in the morning, just to break it.
I don't wanna guess, cause it's confusing, but from my understanding, it's rolled into the taxes by the assessors, but I'll clarify that.
Oh, it's, oh, it's.
So it's counted as new growth.
So it's in, it's.
That might be the change in classification, like maybe what that did.
I don't wanna just throw that out there, I'd rather give you an honest.
Okay. Uh, I bet, I bet you're right.
Yeah, see, yeah, so you're, you're, you're billing as personal property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you, you're not, you don't have it as, as an agreement, so it's, yeah, it's built into the tax rate.
So the new growth raised, the number we say we'll get from more taxes than the next year, which allows us to increase our tax levy. So solar is rolled into that.
Yeah, so they're getting a tax bill for their solar, more than, it's on exempt property and they, it, and then, instead of the ILO program, you built it into the tax rate, so you get two and a half.
You have a contract for twenty years, we'll get X.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's sitting under property taxes, if that's.
Okay.
Can I answer your questions?
It will.
It does, it will.
Look like you're studying that hard.
I think it, I think it deserves to be studied by our.
Yes, it does, yes. Yeah, this is probably your most important exhibit, you know, if you're looking at, but I mean, I can walk through all this with you, um, I sleep on a copy of this, so. And if any questions pop up after you read it, then call us, take the call to the office, uh, and go over them.
Does this have our tax collection rate, or are you gonna go over that, or is?
Yeah, so your tax collection rate, I was gonna point it out when we get to, your tax collection rate is about ninety-six percent, uh, which is where it should be, um, back when you had the issues, it was around eighty-seven, eighty-eight, um, and that's how everything kinda correlated.
And what's the definition of tax collection rate?
Coll- tax collection rate, you just take your real estate, what you committed to what you collected, and that should give you your collection rate, just for property taxes.
Okay.
And it's just for the individual levy year. In other words, if you're down around ninety-one percent, that means you should have a lot outstanding, or you're taking a lot of tax title.
Hmm. Yeah.
And then you're not collecting it.
Right. Okay.
So, and that's what kinda generated your issues before, how it is, but, um, that's being monitored now, um, so everything, you're going in the right direction.
Yep. Good to hear.
So, so that's kinda on the financial end of it, and then the management letter. It's always a byproduct of, uh, of an audit. Again, you don't have no significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in there, which is good, you never wanna see those, um. You just have recommendations, which you kinda walk through with the staff, uh, here, and again, you have nothing major in there, just more fine tuning your financial statements, uh, with staff. Um, the first one to recommend is, uh, you got some new Gatsby statements, again, town received an unmodified opinion, it's got, it's got some new Gaspys coming out, uh, that you're gonna have to do in your financial statements, the two biggest ones that are gonna hit you are the fiduciary activities and the leases.
Um, what's a Gatsby, just.
Oh, governmental accounting standards board. Uh, basically, it's, they dictate of what accounting pronouncements you have to issue, um. So those are the two major ones that's gonna hit you, the leases and the fiduciary activities, um, again, as we do, we give you guidance how to get through them, uh, with all the Gaspys, so. And then the other areas, the new ones, um. The state kinda then, um, cracking down on your cable monies, uh, before they sent out their I G R, they got to keep them in a special revenue fund, you spent directly out of there. Now they put an I G R saying they wanna, they want the fund voted out, still use them in the same manner, but you have to vote it now at town meeting, um, they're gonna be looking for that coming in twenty twenty.
Were people abusing the latitude of the program?
Yes.
We tried. In our minds, but we didn't actually go forward with it, but it feels like it's something that, you know, when you've, if you've got a senior center and then you gotta, you know what I mean, like how, how much can you, how much bang for the buck can you get, all, you know, seemingly legitimate, but I'm not surprised that, that, that the
Yeah, yeah.
the reins have been kinda pulled in.
Yeah, so now, you mean you adopted a receipts reserve, so now you gotta take, take the formality of taking a vote at town meeting.
So if you remember, some of the confusion at town meeting, we're trying to get this a hundred percent right, cause it was such a focus by the state.
Yeah.
So we not only created the special account and funded it, but then also amended the bylaws, which is why we moved things around, which confused people, but we wanted to make sure it was
It was.
to code, so to speak, so.
Yeah. And again, it's more fundamental, I mean, all the expenses we, we reviewed in there were appropriate, um, so you, it's a matter of taking a step at town meeting. Uh, the next one I kinda recommended is, uh, your unrealized gain or loss on investments, you have them with Fartholm you. They should be on your financial statements, now you, you're just not marking the market value up, you're just recording the actual interest, investment income, um. It's usually the trust fund, so it's nothing major, it's more of an accounting issue, uh, we'd like to see it get on there, just so you kinda know, um, so if there's a change in the market, if you have like stabilization funds in investments, there's a huge swing in them, uh, you, you wanna see them on the financial statements. We're recording them on here, um, we're doing it as a GAAP adjustment, uh, but encourage all of our clients to book them within the financials.
Is that income in the statement?
Yes. Um, and then police off duty, uh, you had a huge swing in your police off duty, uh, this year. Um, the state, I think, reduced your free cash by a minimal amount, um, it's really having the police department keep an outstanding list and reconcile it with the G L, I think that will kinda firm up the process, um. Now the payments are coming in, they're kinda monitored just through the general ledger, we'd like to see, uh, the police department keep a set of accounts receivable and kinda match it up. Again, you, you're billing, uh, vendors out for the time the police are there and they reimburse you. Mostly it should be timing, but I mean, other than, um, you may get a vendor that pays late, uh, but they should be monitoring that within the police department.
So this will be coming up again soon, right?
Yep.
With sixty-eight North and details going through there?
It, there'll be more of them, yes, it's the idea though, that kind of monitoring both sides of it, so anytime you have a receivable, it should be tracked in two locations, so making sure our procedures are reflecting that, the police are saying, this is how much we've built up, and this is how much you got, and then the counting agrees, because it's a double layer protection.
Yeah, just that extra. You know, and then they're testing enough, and I think we're off like with a couple hundred dollars, which, uh, was minimal, but there, there's structures there that something could go wrong and not get caught.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then bank transfers, there's certain accounts that bank accounts will match up to the fund balance, like stabilization funds, um, again, your bank accounts should be matching up to the fund balance, your total cash is balanced, uh, which is gonna make the individual bank transfers, which we walked through with Sandy, uh, when we were here, which it should be rectified, um, come close this June. And then, uh, one of the issues is ambulance, you have a lot of excess ambulance outstanding, I think your total outstanding's like four hundred something thousand, uh, excess of ninety days is like three hundred, um, so we'd like you to review that, maybe evade them, get them off your books.
We, we never really talked about that before, or I haven't.
Correct.
Seven years I've been here, what is, wha- wha- what is your involvement in this?
So we, we have a billing company that manages our receipts, um, one way we can improve here and track it better is to, uh, you saw last year, we implemented a quarterly memo that showed you how we were tracking, um, our adherence to financial policy and procedure. We're gonna try and beef that up this year and include things like ambulance receipts, so it's getting a hold of it, um, not just, I don't wanna say trusting, but not just allowing the billing company to handle it, but also tracking it on our end and ma- making sure that we're comfortable with it, and it's being done the way we want it to, so it's, it's a hard focus this year.
Is it tracked, cause it's linked to how they're tracking it, or is it a separate tracking altogether?
I don't understand.
Okay, so, are, are we just, um, so they're tracking it a certain way, are we just res- receiving that the way they're tracking in real time, or do we have an actual separate mechanism that's tracking?
That's what we need to do, is track it ourselves as well, and not just rely on the report.
Okay.
To sim- to put it in the simplest terms.
Right.
Just getting too far ahead of us.
I understood that.
Can you just direct me to the, where the, um, record unrealized gain loss on the investments is?
It, it would be under investment income, if you go to, uh. There if you go to page, uh, sixteen. So if you, if you go down to the category of revenues, investment income, and you go across, you'll see, you'll see a negative two eight oh five, and then non-major funds.
So, um. Other, what's the, uh, investment income is forty-five thousand under a general fund?
Uh, that's interest on taxes, you go one more down.
Oh, it's just the twenty, under gift and donations, twenty-four hundred?
No, one up.
One up.
Interest on taxes is forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
Yeah, so they, so if you see the negative, and see non-major funds, see the negative, twenty-eight oh five, two thousand eight oh five.
Two thousand.
In the middle. Yeah, right, right above your pen, keep going up, 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 down, and to the right, right there.
Twenty-eight oh five.
So it's under the category investment income.
Okay.
So you, you had an unrealized loss at the market value, so your investments. The accrued interest on it is actually negative compared to what you earned. Yeah, it might be in some long treasury bills.
Has to be in some long treasury bills.
Yeah.
At this time.
Like, my guess would be it's in.
So maybe that should be looked, looked at as what we're invested in, or?
Yeah, that's what we're saying, book it on, on your, your accounts, um, so you see it on your financial statements, so you see it at the end of the year, um. It's mostly out in your non-major funds, it's not really messing with your general fund, um, which is good, cause you wouldn't wanna have unrealized loss sitting against your free cash. But yes, definitely something to monitor, I mean, you don't, you don't like to see a negative investment income, um.
No, I mean, you take it, you're getting like ten percent or something.
Yeah, you might buy a US treasury bill generating eight percent, but it's, uh, unrealized loss that's bringing you back down the tube.
Okay.
And that's something we monitor too, is, you know, what are you in, we look at your investments, make sure you're on the legal list, make sure you're not invested in like Enron or something like that, um.
Which we're not.
No, you, no, you're not, you'd see, if you were off the legal list, you'd see a major finding in here, um, so, most communities are in those long term treasury bills. But you kinda, I mean, that kinda goes along with your investment policy, if you're stabilization funds, if you're gonna be starting using your stabilization funds tapping into it, and you got them invested over a ten year treasury bill.
Right.
You might wanna use your free cash instead of your stabilization fund.
Got it.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Uh-huh, and then, well, in the prior findings, you know, one, one thing I will say, uh, that you're very attentive to, to our recommendations, you're very follow up, uh, on them is your cash and investments reconciliation process. Again, we're auditors, so we will always point out, um, we'll always find something, we're really, we emphasize, uh, cash recons and tax recons, uh, account receivable recons, we as an auditor, we emphasize those, we feel like it's your biggest risk, how your financial statements are, so we do a lot of testing with bank recons. And you had a couple, uh, items in there that were unsupported, um, but they're inherited from previous, uh, treasures, and we sat down this year, went through them and, um, recommended doing adjustment to them to get them solidly, get your book squared away, and get your recons uh, but going timely and getting any unsupported documentation out of there, um, and we're talking, I think, takes around seven thousand dollars, um, so it's not material, your financial statements, um. Are encouraged to do, it took a lot of good steps, uh, that passed by a year and a half with your bank recons, which, uh, we were glad to see, um, and you're going in the right direction there, um, you do have some controls in there. And then, uh, on the tax accounts receivables, again, you come a long way on those and reconciling them. Um, the only issue we see there is tax titles, um, taking and being more up to date and reconciling the list, which we anticipate being closed for June of nineteen. Uh, so, most of these items will be, uh, will be going away, um. You know, as far as, uh, auditing the town, it's a very nice town to audit, very responsive, very, um, the folks are attentive, um, so, from my perspective, it's a, you got a nice little town, uh, the communication's definitely improved over the past year and a half, so.
Fair.
Um, I think this year's, I know, uh, Ryan's put emphasis on getting this done earlier, um, and I think we're gonna come the week of October seventh for the nineteen audit, um. So we should be, uh, meeting with you sometime in December, so December, January.
Yeah, there's a reason for that, it kinda speaks to some Chris's questions, is we're getting audited in April, getting these recommendations in June, we're a year behind. So if we can get it done in October, we can start implementing these suggestions for F Y twenty in the fall, pack, clean it up in time for the end of the close of the year, so we're not a year behind, so really wanna get it, the year closed fast and audited fast, uh, so that we can learn and get better faster. So some of these recommendations we've just got, and we've already closed nineteen, so we only can be implemented until twenty.
Right. How much of a variability is there in the towns that you guys handle in what the fiscal years are? Like, January to December versus, they're all the same?
No, they're all June, if you tried to, they're all the same.
So all the states the same, and all the municipalities are all the same?
All the states, yeah. All the same.
That's good.
Yeah, so it taps and falls, and then, the way the kinda the audits go is either if you're not, uh, you have to file a continued disclosure, or you're not a single auditor, which you spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand in federal funds, which you have to have those done by March thirty-first, and you also have to have, if you have any continued disclosures, March thirty-first, so towns will be either like yourself, that don't meet those two requirements, either fall early.
Mm-hmm.
You know, before, I'll call it, the October fifteenth Columbus Day that crushed our fall after, uh, March thirty-first, um. Typically, you always like to be in the springtime, um, but we can definitely a- accommodate. Good, in one, because you're so attentive, um, on items, I mean, I have a few towns that wanna be audited early, but they're not attentive.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we, we have no problem moving them.
Okay, great, you guys got anything else?
Yeah, if you have any questions throughout the year, don't hesitate to call, I mean, that's what we're here for, um. Kinda feel like, nah, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, not just here showing up for a weekend and see if I, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, from, from all we've heard, and, you know, I think of, of, the, the credit, uh, goes to, to Ryan in a way that things have, uh, sort of, uh, turned around a little bit here, but, um, to have a strong relationship is remarkably important.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, I, I agree.
Tom's great, Sandy will call and say, hey, I'm, she doesn't do this a lot, but I'm not clear on, on this, how should we do it, it's better to get that info ahead of time. Communicating, admitting that some things we don't know, kinda helps too.
Yeah, I know.
Mm-hmm.
And they answer the questions, which is nice.
Good. Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, Tom.
I'm good.
Good luck during the doctor season.
Thanks.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah. Hope you guys get out here early.
We will.
See you, Ryan, good night.
See you. Okay, uh, we got, we got, uh, selectmen policies, so, uh, items, item three B.
So, in your document, uh, in your folder you have, what is it called here? Town policies is, is the PDF, I also thrown it up on the screen. So these are, I told you we were doing some policy, some looks at policies, so this was a policy manual that we have, and, um, Joyce, before she left, advised that since we've redone all the financial policies, and we've, we've done some amendments to some policies, that we should um, rescind, resi- resize, resize some of these policies that are still outstanding, so, um. All of them have been addressed or have another follow-on policy or fall under state law, so I can go through them real quick, accounting is now a, a passed policy by you and the finance committee. Uh, debt policy's the same, printer ink, I'm not sure where that comes from.
Love it.
Departmental receipts also in our financial policies, designer selection process is governed by, um, Departmental receipts also in our financial policies, designer selection process is governed by um mass state procurement, so we couldn't deviate from that anyway. Never adopted the electronic uh communications, but we did put in a social media and computer policy that addresses this. Grant policies are under financial management. Town council, uh we came in and put in a stronger policy in terms of centralizing this through my office. Weather closing, same thing, is governed by my office, social media, as I just said, town vehicle personal use. Um it, we don't have town vehicles that aren't used on the clock, so this policy doesn't matter. And then ADA, we revised this as part of a grant application.
So how about all the other ones on there?
Uh those are still in play and I will show you. Um we discussed this a little bit ago. So under town policies, I'm gonna throw it up, just takes one second. So so that this isn't just a binder and and 'cause it was a binder in lawyer's office, we've put all of the policies up. In one spot. So general policies is some of our larger policy baskets, and then all of your policies are listed kind of by um.
Category?
Category, so the plan for you was for me to toss a couple of these at you at a time throughout this year and and update them.
Yeah.
I figured a good way to start was to get the old stuff off the books, so this is now the policies that we can point people to. And then we can update them and combine them and add them um as you see fit, and then this is a more sustainable way to do it for you.
So what do you think, two at a time?
Uh two at a time would be great.
Okay.
So I'll throw them to you the week prior for your review, most of them will just be this looks good or a couple minor updates.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Then make sure they're all have a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty date, and then every couple years you look at them.
Okay.
So the policies on this list in my packet that don't have a date we need to update, is that the idea?
They've been, yeah, they've been put up here uh or on the website as the official policy book.
Mm-hmm.
Um and they need to be looked at and reviewed, maybe some of them don't aren't needed, but um didn't feel comfortable resizing those until we take a look at them. The other ones have all been superseded and need to be taken off the books officially.
And what's the what's the. What's the investment to review a policy, two at a time seems kinda slow, isn't it?
It is, but.
What are you comfortable with presenting at a time?
Two at a time.
That's that's it's your call as a board.
We did this last year with the police as well, so we've done it sort of periodically through it, just found, I I just, I don't really care how many at a time, I mean I'll do whatever is required, but. It seemed as though that rate of it, and there aren't that many that, I don't know, there's like a dozen or fifteen or something like that here, we get through it in a few months to be able to go through it, so that was just why I threw it out there, but I don't really care.
You have about twenty meetings a year, so two two per meeting is about twenty-five percent more than you have, so you could cover it in a year. Some of them are real easy, some of them are kinda dense.
Right, I guess that could matter too, if it's like something that's just like a no-brainer sort of change, it doesn't have to be such a hard and fast sort of number, I guess, doesn't really matter.
Some of them are gonna spur like other things, so we did the selectmen rules and ethics, took kind of a while for us to get to get through those, they're more dense, but like town badges is something you probably wanna talk about more than.
Okay.
How about the boot drive provision, that seems pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, you exempt it once a year and.
That's right.
Okay.
So if we, if you're willing to resize as presented to you, we can clean up the books and then go forward with the plan to do a couple. I mean, if they're real easy, maybe I'll throw three, I'll challenge you and.
Sure, you you choose. You choose, sounds good.
Yeah, why don't you decide what you're comfortable with presenting at a time and we'll go from there.
So the process will kinda be, here's a policy, look at it, talk about it, adjust it, bring it back and finalize it with an approval.
Excellent.
And here, again, if you're willing to resize them, that would be a vote.
Is that what we're R E S I Z E?
Recision, yep.
Oh, alright, R E S I C.
I'm just making words up, but uh like to.
Okay, I think you are.
Abolish, eliminate, dissolve.
We'll get past it, uh.
Those are all real words.
Yeah, I know those are.
Huh.
One of my words.
Recision's if he, I did look it up, Bobby and I had a conversation about it, that's where we're aware of it.
Who won the bet?
Oh, it's Bobby.
Um, okay, so we got town inventory next?
Just need a vote on this, if you're willing to rescind the the ones as presented. So all the ones with a date on that form.
I make a motion to rescind all the ones with the date.
What does a date signify?
That's uh when it was passed. So you're saying the accounting policy or procedure has passed on three thirteen oh seven, which has been superseded by last year's financial management policies updating.
We're still on the um. The one.
Mm-hmm.
So so what's your motion say again?
A mo- motion to accept.
The ones that have been superseded, is that the way I'm.
Yeah.
To eliminate.
The ones, yeah, what the date.
Eliminate the ones, okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, you wanna send it, talk us through this one, Ryan?
So in your in your packet uh put together, been working with the staff to to create a true and useful town inventory for all vehicles. Um IT equipment and um buildings, buildings are a little easier, they don't move around as much.
So we have tabs for fire, police, DPW, IT hardware, building and emails?
So part of this is to show you that that this exists for your use, touched every vehicle, uh talked about each each vehicle with each department head. And then we're gonna give this to accounting in order to get the depreciated value, which is one of the charter items that we weren't hitting.
Okay.
So this inventory is complete, so I wanted to show it to you, see if you wanted anything done with it and looking for some guidance from the board on. Now that we have a good solid handle on everything we have, you'd asked for a replacement recommendation or policy or or vehicle plan. Um just looking for you to comment on on what you'd like that to look like physically or or anything in order to inform future decisions, specifically like capital. So one of the things that comes up a lot is, do we need to replace this truck, do we need to replace that truck? So I'd like to put it into a plan so that it's not a surprise every year that we're doing X, Y or Z.
Didn't we do that with the five-year capital plan last year?
Yes, but vehicles in particular, looking for a more specific. Do you want a vehicle replacement plan from the departments that you would approve, or do you want me to go look at how other towns do it? Just looking for some guidance on what would make decision-making easier, especially with the capital plan, 'cause we're gonna have to adjust it every year. And feel like the boards, um in the finance committee need more information, so I'm trying to get what information would help you make your decisions, if any, uh using things like this inventory.
I mean, it can't hurt to know how other people do it, right, I mean that to, I don't think we have to go crazy figuring that out, but other than that, to have a, we don't have many departments. To have a sort of way to um have that in a logical form that we can follow, it sounds like a good idea to me. So does that make sense, or you looked at up in the sky like it didn't quite make sense?
Just that's how my brain processes, so processing, um.
So I think we should have one per department.
One per department.
'Cause it doesn't seem that cumbersome. And it feels like we almost do it already. With new vehicles, through the police, through fire and that sort of thing. Is that more difficult if it's not a vehicle and some of these other things like building and IT hardware and all that, how do you think it is for that?
Well, IT will go over next, um and buildings are buildings. The. Really just trying to uh just be as blunt as possible to address the 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 public seems to have more concerns about vehicle replacement. This board and the finance committee have more questions and concerns about vehicle replacement. So rather than just throw it at you at budget season and say, what do you think of this list? Looking to get information or some plan together that everyone's comfortable with, that we can feed to the capital improvement planning committee so that it becomes more streamlined in terms of capital.
Yeah, so why don't we do it per department, that seems to make sense that way, right?
And what evidence would help with that decision, so other towns, how many other towns, do you want me to compare it to like towns, does that matter, would that?
Feels like it matters, yeah, you know, I mean the 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 focus group that we've used recently for other analyses like this, whether it be permit fees or whatever else. Doesn't necessarily have to be a dozen or whatever they use there, but a few of those towns that have similar populations and and revenues and that sort of thing seems like a a good idea, not that we have to mimic them, but to see how they do it, seems like a good idea if we can get that information.
And uh Ryan, also maybe items that, you know, big-ticket items that may not be a vehicle, like the, you know, breathing apparatuses or something.
Scooper, yeah.
They could add to the list if they think they're gonna be needing replacement in the next year or two, and this would be, I'm asking, this would be on the town website?
This will be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
We're gonna pretty it up and put it on the town website.
Yeah.
Good.
And and I just to just to say one more thing, it, I think a lot of this is property already done with the capital plan.
Yeah.
Right, they just have to sort of extract it from from there and organize it a little bit, but or you do, but, right?
Yeah, well the, so I'll, when the department's looking to feed them information, so when they say submit capital, also submit.
Yeah.
Five peer or like towns or do some research from these towns on how many they have and how often they replace them.
Right.
So you can have that information, but I didn't wanna put our departments through that work if it if that didn't matter to the board, ask the finance committee for the same type of feedback. Trying to get the information you need to make the best decisions possible.
This doesn't feel like it needs to be something that's done every single year, but to do it once can't hurt, even if it's a little bit of extra work.
Don't mind the work.
And Ryan, um. Mileage, I wonder if we could track that each year, would that be too much to ask?
No, they do that already.
So we, no, we know each year, like the new ambulance, I see the mileage has already got thirty-three thousand on it and the other one. It'd be nice to know if like, hey, they're not even using the old ambulance anymore. The new one's got thirty thirty-three thousand, it's a twenty sixteen, and the old one is a tw- two thousand five with eighty-eight thousand miles. It's it seems like that one's maybe parked now and they're just driving the new one, you know, it'd be nice to track things like that, like we know what what we're not using and not using.
That's the type of feedback we're looking for, 'cause sometimes you hear things that they're true and sometimes they're not.
Yeah, exactly.
So the more information we can push out there, I think the stronger the decision-making gets.
It's aggressive.
Sounds like my house.
Alright, so that rolls right into the um IT inventory.
Yep.
So this is more. I don't think there's decision-making, but this is more to show, so we asked this year to replace, uh we asked for thirty thousand dollars to replace computers and on the capital plan, we have another thirty thousand next year. So this uh demonstrates all of our all of our computers and technology, the big stuff like servers, et cetera, and each one of these packages comes with the mouse, the the. The ancillary equipment that you need to run the computers.
And how about software?
Software as well, so we always ask the computer come with the software we need, plus you layer on whatever the department software is, we don't have that many. And then every machine is built to handle whatever that department needs, but most of the stuff is web-based now, so it's not as cumbersome on the on the machines. So the notes column, you'll see this Windows end of life, so this, the reason why we asked for it, besides that these computers are getting older, is um Windows seven, which a lot of these run. Uh isn't gonna be serviced anymore, so they they won't be able to fix, so we're we're definitely gonna hit the target, but we would've been running out of time to have our computers functioning uh in a couple years. And that's the note that you see there, so we did take advantage of, so column F or FY nineteen. We did as much as possible in-house before we trimmed down budgets in order to uh solve some capital issues with any excess money we had. So we were able to get through six of these computers last year. And then two departments purchased their own seven, eight, so we did that internally, and then the plan for FY twenty is to replace everything but. The computers that are in the public safety vehicles. And then the servers, which are are big-ticket items.
Do we do a joint purchase with anyone for these, when we when we buy in bulk like this, or is this just a uh just a uh, is it a standard procurement, how's that work?
So this, we procure this through um well, CMG facilitates it straight from Dell, but we purchase it off a state contract.
Oh. Okay.
Okay. So we'll be purchasing all the computers you see here and updating those um within the next couple months. So that'll leave us with. In FY twenty-one, the um. The the equipment we need inside the public safety vehicles and then the the big servers, which are expensive.
And then where are the costs for the setup uh and the the configuration and networking of it all?
Built-in.
To the cost of the machine?
So the number you see for the fire server, that is the server plus installation, which CMGeeks charges us a standard rate.
Okay.
Uh no matter how complicated or easy it is, we pay the same.
Okay.
And then jumping out to. FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see that we don't need to do a bulk replacement again until. Twenty-five, so I'll roll this into a more comprehensive and sustainable plan that can be used by the capital planning committee. But also um toying with the idea of suggesting that rather than say thirty thousand. Every five years you do five to ten thousand in a technology account and then roll it from year to year so that. You're managing it in a more sustainable way and not hitting the free cash.
That's great.
But that plan will be presented to to see if you approve it, and then we'll try and compare it against leasing as well. Leasing can be more expensive, but it's easier to handle. Um you know, those are financial decisions that the town needs to make.
Okay.
So basically wanted to show this to you, um not expecting feedback right this second, but if you have feedback, that's great, how you wanna approach this long-term and to show the the residents that we are planning this out. Um and not just ask for money and just doing computers real quick, it's a thought-out process and it's detailed and we're trying to make it as least impactful as possible over time.
I think it's just more of the same from what we've been doing, not us, but you and you guys, so I I just, I don't know, it looks looks good. And it looks like we'll have something to look at and act on soonish, or when do you plan on that?
Gonna roll it into the capital plan, so we're gonna have the capital planning committee meet for the first time in the next month or so, start getting department requests to adjust the capital plan. Be presented to you, all of it in bulk in December, with the financial forecast, the capital plan, all that stuff that it leads into a good budget decision-making process.
Sounds good.
Well, there's gonna be a challenge to that, right, because a lot of this software like you're like you're displaying here has a finite life cycle, so. You know, Windows seven, for example, is is becoming obsolete and being replaced by Windows ten at a at a deadline, so everything you've got operating on Windows seven, you're gonna wanna switch at the same time. When when ten becomes.
Oh, that's.
The new platform, you know?
Right, obsolete again, yeah.
So it's gonna be tough to to space it, because you don't wanna get rid of a machine that still has some life cycle left, right, because it's not, the software's not gone obsolete, but there is a hard stop somewhere, so. Um yeah, I like your idea, I like the idea of, you know, graduating, gradually replacing these things, but. There's gonna be a challenge, I think, at some point where. You're gonna be unsupported and you're gonna just have to buy a a new system, you know what I mean?
Which is why a lot of people go to leasing, but it's more expensive.
Right, but right, that's the, you're right, that's the.
Leasing makes sure that you always have.
Leasing, you're always current, right, but you're paying more money per machine.
And then I guess if you just stagger it over three or four year period, you're you're mitigating at least what your risk is.
Yeah, you are mitigating that, sure, but.
I guess maybe it's tough to be perfect on that thing.
But I promis- given how professional my predecessors have been, that there was a plan, it just hasn't been, it wa- wasn't handed to me, you know, and we've.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Basically Paul sat me down from CMGeeks and was like, hey, your computers aren't gonna work anymore.
Right, right.
You know, so you try not to go to the town with a a panic, but there needs to be a plan that's passed off, you know, from executive to executive to make sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, don't let best get in the way of better, right, I mean, this is obviously better than what we had and needing forty-two computers all at one time, but yeah, no, absolutely, I like this. Maximize what we can get out of each machine.
Uh Ryan, back on the vehicle list, um they could also put hours in addition to the mileage.
Yes.
I think there's hours on there, or you mean annual?
Annually.
Yeah, yeah.
Annually, you know, as we update it.
How many hours, okay.
Just whatever's on the hour meter of the machine or equipment.
They def- it is definitely tracked, it's just whether or not it's put into a. They def- it is definitely tracked, it's just whether or not it's put into reports.
If we had it, yeah, once a year.
Can I, um, wh- while we're on this equipment side, it's just it's just coming to me, and this is kind of a r- a a an off the cuff question here. But at the uh Dingey Dash, um, you know, I was there for the duration and many people came to me and asked why the why the fire department wasn't udi- using the motor in the boat to go pick up these sunk sailors. I mean, why why weren't they using the motor, do we know? Is it not allowed on the pond, or was it not, I'd have to, I don't know.
It might not be allowed.
I've never seen a motor on that pond.
Yeah, it may not be allowed, I mean, unless it was an emergency, maybe they could, but, were they using a trolling motor?
No, they're penal.
I don't remember ever seeing it.
Yeah, because it's so close, it was such a short little.
Yeah, I don't know, no, I was just, you know, everybody said, well, geez, you know, it's taken them five minutes to get to the kid, why don't they use the motor, and I said, I'll ask, I don't know.
Chris has got overtime.
Okay.
I was kidding.
So I'm asking the question for the for for my constituency.
Yeah, cause that feeds the aqueduct.
Mm-hmm.
Certain times of the year.
Yeah, that's very well could be the answer.
They like to be fit, I don't know, we'll get you an answer.
Alright, we done with that?
Yes.
Okay, so now is next is the uh, the technology plan.
That that.
That was what we just did.
Did.
So the municipal building discussion, do you wanna move into that?
So this leads into that, so these two things lead into discussion about buildings, so on the report that you were given, the uh inventory that you were given, the raw inventory, also tracking building equipment, building, buildings and upgrades and that will also be a part of the capital plan. It's gonna be discussions from the capital planning committee, leading into what do we wanna do with buildings. We had a really difficult decision recently about the senior center. Uh, they didn't have air conditioning and what I I remember is the hottest summer for whatever. And again, dumping money into to this building, which we we need a longer term plan for this building if this is if this is gonna be the building. So it's no one's favorite topic, but um we will need to continue to discuss what we wanna do for for buildings and how you want me to direct my time. The last, we talked about municipal buildings, there was a few plans that were put together, it was decided there wasn't enough time before town meeting, we should continue to discuss it. So, we're not gonna make a decision about the future buildings like tonight, but looking for some guidance on what you want us to do with the options we have or to roll up capital plans for these buildings. Uh, looking for some direction from not just us four, but the finance committee and others on where do we go?
Yeah, I mean, the last week, we talked about it, um, last year before what you just said, before we sort of hit a hit us a place where we didn't have really time, was that we said we didn't wanna be the people who were just gonna stick our head in the sand and pretend like it's not a problem, or that, you know, just put it off for other people to deal with, so I'm still in that court where I I just think we have to just keep talking about it. Um, all the different surveys, um, that we've done over the last three or four years for various different reasons around town, some of which you were part of, some which you weren't, are all pretty clear on w- the order of importance the towns puts in uh for new buildings. And it almost definitely goes, uh, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, but almost definitely goes public safety, town offices, senior center, and you know, somewhere in that that sort of realm. So, I mean, if we, it it feels like if we wanna um, keep it going, is we go to the the one that might be most popular and see where it goes from there. We're not gonna fund it through just raising money, uh, in the normal way that we raise money, which is not gonna happen. So, I don't know what you guys think, but if we're gonna actually go forward with, we're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be a, okay, yep, we're going forward with the plans for a new public safety center, and it's gonna be a debt exclusion that's gonna be paid over thirty years, which debt exclusion slash override, whatever else. Or we just ignore it, you know, I I don't know, I'm I'm still for going for it and seeing what happens.
Yeah, I really liked that last plan they had with uh everything, was it fifteen, fifteen million?
Yeah.
But um, back to what you said, Ryan, about the air conditioning in this building, I think we have to keep it up. You know, we can't neglect it, you know, if it needs a roof, we have to put a roof in the meantime, if you gotta put a new central AC or a mini split in here.
We did put the AC in.
You know, we gotta, we gotta keep it up, you know, we can't not take care of this building, but um.
And and that's a realistic look at things, because we have to, because we also know how things sort of work around here, so just pretending like because we're going in one direction, we can just sorta pretend like we don't know what we already know about how long it may take to actually get there, then I agree.
So people, i- it's, I'm not, people know me at this point, I'm not, I don't like freak out and try and dramatize things or scare people, but the 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 decision that was made on the air conditioner for the senior center was made because really can't get up in the roof anymore, and it would have been so expensive to to fix what's going on up there, that it was cheaper to put in the mini splits, probably more efficient choice these days, but like, there's not a not a lot up here that we can be fixed, we know that the police one is gonna go eventually. Uh, this side's good for now because of decisions that were made. Uh, there's gonna be thousands of dollars that need to be put into this building in the short term, not fifteen million for sure, it's definitely cheaper. But these capital decisions are gonna, the the library continues to need things and and will, they have a laundry list, the library trustees have things that need to be done. Um, and just need to decide, there's not enough money to do it all, to include some of our operating budget challenges. Prioritization is gonna have to be done, and they're gonna be tough decisions.
A- and by the voters voting down new buildings, that also says that they wanna keep this, so, you know, we have to um spend the money on it, you know?
Right, and they they actually haven't vote voted down anything but a senior center, I mean, that's the only thing that's been voted down. There hasn't been anything else out there that was tangible, that was designed and whatever else, so, I hear you, but we we're talking applicably necessarily about town offices and whatnot, but the, you're right, that senior center, to to keep it going as it is, it has to be done, because it's three times now been voted down to go in any other direction, so, you know, I I I hear you. So what do you think, Ryan, I mean, I, you know, I, what I'm hearing you say is, um, uh, wh- are you are you basically saying, cause what what I think is, if there's a certain amount of cash that we're gonna be spending on this building and the library or whatnot, it's still such a tiny little drop in the bucket compared to a new building, that because that's such a large undertaking anyway, you know, why not, I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not not necessarily saying, but why not just have that its own thing? We still keep operations going here for three years, five, whatever sort of amount of time it takes, out of what our normal operations are, and and not even think about using any of the normal operating money for that big project that's gonna be its its own animal when the time comes anyway. I mean, what do you think about that?
Uh, you will have some capacity in the, once some of the debt clears, specifically the roads project. It's about a hundred sixty-five thousand a year, it was done in two thousand thirteen, fixed a lot of roads. That capacity's coming off, that borrowing power is not fifteen million, it's probably two million or so, but have that to kind of lessen the load, but I think you're right, you're gonna have to absorb some of this operational deficit, that's definitely one place to do it. If you add on more debt, it further constricts the operating budget. But it is the number one, it's, I'm I'm paid to give you guys the truth.
Sure.
The number one issue in this town is is municipal space, and it's not, it's not popular uh to say, but every report and every administrator you had has has said the same thing, that there's not enough space for the fire and police. The seniors' activities are restricted by the space that they're in, we're impeding on the library's progress and growth. And um it's it's hard to fit in new employees, so we're putting the assessors in here, because it's better for the finance team, but there's two desks in that office that used to house just Lori. And again, not over dramatizing, but our refrigerator is in this closet, you know, and we have to move it to get to our paper. Like, not a big deal, like, ev- every staff member is fully committed to, and not like mad at the end of the day, cause that happens, but this town does not have a a town hall.
Right.
It restricts economic development, and it 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 limits the character. So at some point, a decision's gonna be forced, it could be twenty years from now, so don't dramatize that sentence, but something has to be done.
That's what I was about to say, what what would force the decision, I mean, building's gonna have to fall down. It really is, uh unless we keep champion, trying to do something, I mean, it's gonna have to fall down for something to hap- to happen.
And I don't think you should neglect it to
No.
Have that happen.
You sound like I'm trying to make it as pleasant as possible.
And you've done a great job, it's just, I think we have to think, you know, in the future, when do we go back to the townspeople with uh, and what do we go with, you know, what plan, you know, what uh design, you know? Public safety, you know, is it next year, next, you know, year after, um. That's the big question, right, when do we bring it to the townspeople again?
And what would they be willing to accept or not?
Yeah, I mean, I was on the building committee for this, for the the senior center for, we we met eighty times, I think, I was on for like two and a half years, there was six, seven of us. And, you know, once you you sort of get invested in into a design, into a project, I mean, we went from, you know, fifty-something the, you know, fifty-seven hundred square foot, we cut it way down, we went through so many different iterations, I spent hours in here with Rick Green, we went through every page of a hundred pages, going through every little thing and and just trying to pare it down, it doesn't matter. People have their preconceived notions on certain things, like, why don't you just make a box, a building, go in there and we'll put up some drywall, you know, it doesn't matter, so, you know, so you have to, um, it's it it has to percolate for a while, and and people really wanna and feel like they need it. Or it's just gonna get just blown away, like the senior center, it wasn't even close, so, I I think you gotta keep it going, keep it percolating, keep it in people's minds, because it has been over these surveys over the years, the last few years, we've talked about it, and people seem to be very much in favor without actually voting for it, for a public safety building, for an upgrade on that, they see the fire station, they see, you know, they see the the police station, it it, I don't know, I I I don't know what that exactly means, but I I I'm, I think if there's anything that's gonna go, it would be that, and, um.
Maybe that's what we should shoot for next, is just public safety, fi- police and fire. And then there would be room
Right.
For a senior center.
Right.
And in the meantime, they would maybe have this.
Or community use, call it, you know what I mean, whatever, you know, I mean, it's some of it matters on how you how you do that, but I don't know, it's dog, it's about the most polarizing.
What's the question, I guess I'm 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 lost in the discussion as to what the ultimate question is.
What direction we're supposed to be setting in?
I mean, we we need a new, we need a new public safety building, we should pursue that with every resource we have to pursue that. I mean, what does that mean, does it mean bringing it up at town meeting, I don't know the details of that, but it's something they've gotta done, gotta, it's gotta be done, right? So sooner or later, this point is, this building's gonna get to the point of disrepair, where it's gonna cost more to maintain and upkeep this building than to build a new one. So if we need a new one, what is the strategy we should take?
Right, so we've been working on that for a number of years now, and so some of that, a lot of it costs money to do schematic di- designs to do beyond that, so you know, I think we're talking a little bit beyond, cause we did allocate some money somewhat recently, when was that money out there to 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 come up with this?
That was December.
December, to come up with this most recent, so we spent some money, we did a sort of next phase of work, and then the discussion is coming now, okay, we have something that was presented to us, which you you can definitely, you should take a look at actually, say, okay, this is what presented, do we now take the next step? And that is to try to go to town meeting to get additional money, cause we can talk all we want, it goes nowhere.
Right.
But to actually allocate more money for the next phase of research or design, whatever you wanna call it, into the the program, I think that's what we're talking about. So just to answer your question about what are we actually talking about, I think that's what we're talking about, is to take the next step beyond the schematic design that we already did recently.
Right.
And say, okay, are we gonna go to the next step now that we've received these options, cause that's what we got, we got what, three options from them?
Yeah.
We had three options, um, on.
And how were the options received?
By us, that's all it was really.
No, by your town, so, by the town.
It was uh put out on some social media through emails.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it was decided that to try and, she warranted in before town meeting would f- would force a really big decision without the proper lead time.
Okay.
So it was put off to, let's just make this decision kind of in the fall after the budget shakes out.
Okay.
Which here we are, unfortunately, it's fall.
So what's our plan, are we gonna put it out?
Well, that's that's
That's our decision.
We're asking.
So, and so my, well, no, no, let me just say, from our experience, in in the way it was the sen- the first time the senior center went out, there was no actual estimate. And it just went out to, and there was no design, no full design, it was just, it went on the ballot, no one had really any idea how to answer any questions, that was the in my opinion, that was the downfall of it, is there was no information, it was just like, it was rushed, and it was out there. And then from there on, money was allocated, grant money came in to be able to do the design, and it was a lot more, um, uh, a lot more information and detail went into it, but there was already a stigma to it. It had already been voted down, it was right, okay, we're trying to push this through again, it wasn't the case for the next iteration of it, but it already had the stigma, so I think, you know, to to answer the question on this time, to not do that, is to not try to, just just because we got a couple of designs, options from a architect on some schematic, they say, okay, let's just shoot straight for the ballot. Um, without a lot of information, I think, just from experience, very recent, I think it's a wrong thing to do, and the next step would be to say, okay, if we if we wanna move forward with this, we get some prices from 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 some architects on what it's gonna be to design this thing, and then get those prices in and then go to town meeting next time and say, X amount of money, this is to design a new public safeties, you know, building, or whatever sort of building it's gonna be, and if people say, okay, then we move forward with it, and that'd be the next step.
It sticks in my mind that the UMass folks that put together our capital plan, their their question to me was always, what about the buildings? What about the buildings, like, every report we read, what are you doing with that, because your financial capacity, you know, to do a dump truck or an ambulance, like, that's that's a big deal, but it's nothing compared to the the long term plan, and I didn't have an answer. Basically, not looking for to answer it tonight, but there needs to be a longer term discussion on what this town's gonna look like. And the centerpiece has to be its public safety, or its its town hall, or its its senior center. What these buildings are gonna look like, cause everything else falls in around it, what you do with the operating budget, but it it's that elephant in the room that needs to be discussed, decided, or put to bed, so that all the other decisions can be made.
That's why I send you those bit, like, I I send, you know, I send you bids sometimes, or bids results, I send them to him too, because I'll see like East Hampton is building, I think it actually is East Hampton, we talked about it tonight, is building an eleven million dollars such and such. Or some other random town is building, and I'm like, how how are they doing this? And it's because they must have the support and they've moved forward, cause they can't do it out of just their normal operating, so they've garnered enough support to to get through to the next level of override or debt exclusion, right, so I, I think that's really the only reasonable way we can do it.
The next try has to be, everybody has to be on board, otherwise it's not gonna pass.
Dan, do you remember, uh, you you so you said it was just the senior center has been voted down, we never actually put just public safety?
Um.
And how many?
No, so, I I out of the three or four times it went on the ballot, if you'll recall, one time, there was like three items in a row. One was for like, and it was, it was ordered oddly, because one of them was a citizen's petition versus what was came from the select board, because the seniors had gotten a citizen's position to put it in there, so it was like, I guess theoretically, a public safety was 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 shot down because it was combined with the senior center too, but on its face, it wasn't really, you know, I wouldn't call it that it was rejected because of the content, it was just more of the format, you know, so, but anyway. There was no design for it, it was just a number.
I'll tell, I'll tell you, even even if you said, and I'm not saying this, but say you said, we're just gonna do the public safety building, the number one question you're gonna get in any municipality is, okay, but you have those other, so what's the, what's coming next? So e- even if you do plan to just do one, you kinda have to answer the follow-ons, which is do you revamp the slate and make that this, or what happens to the folks in the library, cause those needs are still gonna be there. So you don't have to try for all of them at once, but the the plan has to include everything.
Well, we can't try for all at once, right, we don't have the budget to try for all at once.
But even that.
So we gotta prioritize the public safety building, cause I think that's what you said was first on the list, right?
I said that, because based on survey results, but yes, and I'm just trying to take words out of his mouth there.
So that's police and fire, so then they'll say, well, what are you gonna do with the old fire station, that is what, like, that question comes up. And to me, you think you'd, they'd keep it for storage for the DPW or something?
Well, that's not even, I mean, you know, I guess that's a moot point until the new fire station gets passed, right, I mean.
But i- is, are you gonna, you have to have a plan, are you gonna tear it down, you're gonna leave it, you're gonna maintain it?
Well, let's cross that bridge when we get there.
But people ask that question.
Well, that should be our answer, vote in my new fire station, then we'll discuss what we wanna do with the old fire station.
And then they say, well, you're gonna want another fifty grand to tear it down, or, I'm just saying what people say.
That questions do come, so it's not a bad idea to have an answer, just that's not necessarily just a, we'll see when, we say, oh, we've, you know, we've thought of a few things, we just have even as the town center committee, we've thought of incorporating that space into a more open space by potentially knocking it down and creating a, whatever, it's just another idea. So it's just that to say, no, we have been thinking about it, there are these three or four things we've talked about, we don't know what the town's gonna go for, but, you know, there there are a few things we've talked about.
Some I have some ideas.
That's great, I mean, I think that that's a a good way to answer the question without actually answering it, you know, not trying to dodge it, but just saying, we don't really know yet, but we have talked about it.
Like, it could be, you know, it could be storage or tear it down, like you said, make an open space.
Right.
So if you remember the design that was presented to you, if you just went with the public safety option, it's it's cheaper, it's X, solves this problem.
Yeah.
You could, the way that was designed. You could, the way that was designed, it was purposeful, add on later. Right, like, make that decision again.
Right.
But there's a, you know, an opportunity cost there, you're gonna have to remobilize, repaid, right, it sort of might end up being two to five million more to do it piecemeal, but that might be the answer, but people are gonna wanna know.
And we can have that answer, and, and.
What's phase two, what's phase three, what's phase four?
We already do have a sh- a well that can support it all, cause that was done in the first place. We have a septic system design that can support it all. When I say it all, I mean all the buildings put together. We have the space for it, the land for it, the nitrogen loading, all that sort of stuff that we had sort of pre-thought out for a combined or separate sort of structures that would house all the operations that we would need over there. That stuff's already actually, literally in place, so we, you know, there's a half million bucks that's already spent in the ground and in design, that, that's, uh, useful. So.
It's a short term, looking to see when you wanna talk about this again.
E- every week. I mean, I, I don't, I, 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 I mean, do we want, I, I guess that's the real question though. So we did the schematic design, we have, listed stuff will get to Chris, so he can obviously take a look at it all too, and, and, you know, we can refresh ourselves on what those, those were, is our next, you know, um, discussion in this, is to decide whether or not to go at, whether it's, you know, whatever next town meeting, whether that's a special town meeting. Not specifically for this issue, but a special town meeting, or annual town meeting with estimates from architects that say, this is what it's gonna cost to design this building. And we, we receive those estimates and talk about whether or not to go to town meeting with a number, and see if people will go for it. I think that's the next step. It can't hurt, it can't hurt to get free estimates.
You could decide a date at a meeting to have this be the central topic, have it be a public forum. Multiple invitations, to kinda make it more, give it some more, uh, weight, some more fanfare. But just looking to see when, if at all, you can say, table it, or put it on a future agenda, but when do we wanna talk about it again?
Yeah.
If at all.
And.
And that cannot, that can be decided, you know, by email or whatever, but.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, we're set, set right now, but we have, we have, um, you know, the architects we use for the senior center, we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with them, I'm positive we can talk to them, and please give us an estimate on, and plus the architects we use on the schematic, those people all wanna provide estimate information, so that they can have a better uh, understanding of the community that they might be getting bigger contracts from, for lack of a better way to put it, so.
They want a shot at doing it.
Correct. So, um, I don't know, I think that would be the next step.
And, uh, while we're on it, so, let's say it passed, so police goes up there. That would free up space for the library to come over here, and this would probably, you know, be three, four, five years from now. And then, maybe, uh, we should think about having an estimate for tearing the fire station down, so we can say, look, it's gonna cost fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, whatever, to tear it down. Maybe it would be best to be, be left for DPW storage, or maybe the fire department would, you know, access equipment, or
Mm-hmm.
Whatever, the, the playground, uh, committee, you know, they may need it. Just so we have those numbers, uh.
Put a nice brewery there.
Yeah, sa- uh, salad, like Princeton, they just sold their mechanics hall for a thousand dollars to, some guy's got a five years to do something with it.
Hmm.
You know?
And somebody did, I, I don't remember which town administrator, had somebody quote a full retrofit of this building. It was like a million two or something, to get it to a, to the point where it was actually a real building. You might have to go back and do a look at some of that, but that was done as well, so this, I mean, we, over a certain period of time, we did a lot of different. A lot of different estimates and discussions, uh, on all this stuff.
So we've beat this up pretty good, have we answered your question at all? Cause I don't feel like we did. I mean, I think.
So, so, re- really looking for is, do I put more time into this, and, and if so, when do we talk about it again? But, there's, from the staff perspective, there's, there isn't a single answer from this board.
Right.
Terms of, each person kinda has, like, you're, you're all kind of on the same page, but saying slightly different things. There needs to be some direction on where do we go with this, if anything, or, you know, tell the staff, put it away for a couple of years, or.
I, I don't think you so, you heard a bunch of different stuff from us tonight, I feel.
You can't, you can't put it away for a couple of years, it's gotta be high priority, it's gotta be priority one.
I feel like you heard pretty, you know, um, similar things for us to, to, to say, okay, what?
Without Jamie and, and, um, Jamie's right there. Hey, Jamie, Jeff and Pat here as well.
Okay, well, they can be, you can talk to them about it, or we can do it, uh, definitely, I'm not saying you've gotten full direction, I'm just saying as far as the overall feeling of things, it feels like it's overall pretty similar between us all.
I really liked that last design, I mean, I know it was fifteen million, but it, it was just, it was beautiful. It had the fire station underneath, half police, half community center, and town offices were included, right?
Just to put this idea into the board's mind, like, is there a number that the town would be comfortable with?
No way.
But if, if that was like, nine million, you got everything done, like, that's go, go with that. Cause then we can try and target that money, you know, like, could we get it? I don't know. But, it, it just doesn't feel like, if, if we said it's twelve million, like, that's too much, or if six million, I'll do it right now, you know? There needs to be some type of like, let's do this.
So, and then I guess we.
And this is what it costs, and this is what the town can support.
Th- then that, that question always comes up, comes up, how much would the ta- average tax bill increase? So I guess maybe if we had a five million dollar uh, override, how much would the average household go up? If you had a ten million dollar override, how much would the average house go? If you spent fifteen million, how mu- you know?
I don't think it matters, I'm, I, I don't mean to be a cynic, but we, we didn't, we, we didn't pass the ambulance that we needed, because, you know, it doesn't.
But it's just the questions come up.
It does, oh no, I don't, I'm not saying don't answer those questions, but I'm saying the overall, to, to answer his question about the actual number.
Okay, oh yeah, that, yeah.
I just.
Fifteen million was about five, five hundred dollars on the average taxable year. So if you pared it down, you know, into thirds, ten million's three fifty. One hundred, two, two, two hundred, one fifty, two hundred for five.
Yeah.
But you're not getting a building for five, so.
Right.
There isn't one out there. Ten's kinda like the low point right now.
For the combined we're talking about, right, this.
Combined fifteen million, even the public safety building alone is, the days of building not for five are not, not there right now, unless we had some type of recession. You're looking more eight to ten.
Yep.
Just for a single thing. So that's what the architects continue to say, is like, if you're gonna build a ten million dollar public safety, it's cheaper to mobilize once and only add, only, right? It's a big deal, I know it is, five million for this, those are the decision points.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's a decision that's gonna be, that's gonna be made at town meeting, right? I mean, all we can do is present the project. And say, here it is. Obviously, you gotta keep it more economical than we have in the past, cause it's not flying like it is, right? So I would say to concentrate on a public safety building. You know, focus on it today, tomorrow, high priority, and see where that goes.
Right, so the first thing you have to do there, cause we didn't do that the first time, and it wasn't necessarily the board, was to get design money. To be able to actually know how much it actually costs, cause the first number that went out there, that got voted down, was a million short, didn't matter, cause they all got voted down. But once we got the actual estimate, it went on the first ballot for like a million and a half, that was the citizen's petition or whatever, million and a half, it ended up, after two years of building committee, just going after it and cutting it and slashing it and taking out this and taking out that, it's still been at two and a half, so it was still a million short. And it would've been a calamity if it got approved at the town meeting for a million and a half, and then we did the design and went back to the town and said, well, we got a million and a half, but we need another million. Talk about the worst-case scenario, so, what we would have to do here is get buy-in for the design first, and then go from there. Which, you know, if you do a design, you, you, I think you can always rationally, rationalize and say you're not wasting money, because you are having a design done, so, even if it goes away for ten years or three years, or some, about a time period where you don't have crazy, you know, building law changes, you know, building code changes, which I can't imagine there are, you know, whatever, still, you have a tangible sort of document and whatnot, that, you know, inflation won't have to increase how much it will cost to build, but at least you have something out of it. You haven't just wasted the money.
So, inspiring, inspiring conversation, I would say, the next step would be a heavily, heavily publicized public forum where some of these decisions are made.
Yes.
Go do this, and we'll do it.
Sooner than later.
Right.
Two weeks, four weeks?
Yeah, I mean, with full board, right? I think full board is a good idea, to make sure everybody's sort of, uh, jamming in.
Front and center, it's a need, it's a need.
So, second.
You know, we can't bury our heads in the sand and ignore the need, because down the road, as was said several times, you, you're gonna be sunk, right, so. Sooner than later.
So you have a meeting on September twenty-third, that would give enough time to advertise.
Nice, it's my birthday, we'll do it then.
My birthday.
Uh-huh.
Just kidding.
Uh.
Would've been awesome, who'd have had cake?
He doesn't get cake, just cause.
I don't eat cake.
You don't rate.
Okay, we'll set that up.
Excellent, I like it. Good first step, good discussion.
All right, so, so TA report, you're up.
Right. All right, so, some of this, you were there, um, but town meeting voted on Thursday to approve an amended FY twenty budget at nine point three million dollars, or a three point zero seven percent increase from FY nineteen, this thirty-one thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars more than FY twenty's approved budget at town meeting, so this is our new budget as it is.
Mm-hmm.
This rejects the certified assessment from the Quavon Regional School District. Uh, the difference is fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-three, so they assessed the town here, and town meeting rejected that assessment by a total of fourteen two ninety-three. So, if there is a vote going on tonight in New Braintree, um, whether or not they approve the new, new assessment, and then Hardwicks later this week, we'll know by the end of the week, uh, whether or not the budget holds. So if both of those towns approve the new certified assessment, then four fifths of, of the region have approved it, and we will need to, uh, vote our budget again and cut fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-three. If another town says no, or rejects their assessment, then, um, it goes back to the school committee, and then the whole process starts again.
Do we have any way of, um, getting some inside info on how that's gonna go tonight? Do, do you know if?
I don't.
Are both towns meeting tonight?
Just New Braintree.
Do we know when the other town meeting is?
I, I wanna say Harwick is Thursday, but. It's this week, it has to be within forty-five days of July sixteenth, so it has to be by September third, and no one's gonna meet on Labor Day, so I'm guessing it's the end of this week.
I tried to find it on the New Braintree's website today, I couldn't see any info on there, how it was worded or anything like that.
So, you will.
How it was worded?
On New Braintree?
Yeah.
It didn't.
Okay, I didn't either.
Guessing they were similar to us, and trying to figure it out to the last minute.
Okay.
Um, trying to find a way to get to that number, cause that was the goal.
Yeah.
And what is the, um, what is the deadline on that before, assuming we don't come to a consensus? Amongst the five member towns, it's my understanding that the state will ultimately make a decision on that?
So your numbers are thirty and forty-five, so it's thirty days, um, so for sake of the argument, New Braintree rejects the budget tonight. The school committee has thirty days to act on that.
But they could do it in one day.
They could do it in one day.
And then our forty-five begins.
From the day they certify the assessment, so it actually comes from treasurer of the schools to our treasurer, you have forty-five days to vote it again. So at a minimum, we're looking at mid-October.
Okay.
Um, with the full thirty days, you're looking at mid-November. Couple implications there. You have to have another special town meeting, if it doesn't get done by December first, the state comes in and decides it, because you can't go more than half a year without half of your budget decide, sixty percent of your budget.
Okay.
Um, another thing is, if we don't get a new budget voted and approved by the middle of November, then we will not be able to set our tax rate in time to send out bills on January first, which means we'll have to borrow some money in order to have the cash flow to finish the year, so. Hopefully, it can all get done efficiently, and, um, the numbers are really close, everyone's trying to get to everyone's number, so I have some faith that we'll get it done.
Have you talked to the, the, um, the, the s- school administration since town meeting?
Just after town meeting, um, they're obviously waiting until the other towns, they have four other towns to deal with. Uh, two in this particular arrangement. We talked mostly about the MSBA, and making sure that the roof stuff gets done in a timely manner.
Okay.
Uh, employee vacancies, so we hired Iris Rivera as our new assessing assistant. We will be sharing Iris with Rutland. The split is twelve hours here in Hubbardson, twenty in Rutland, she will be a Hubbardson employee and working out of this office right here. Her first day will be the day after Labor Day weekend, September third. Uh, we've had a vacancy here for several months, we're very excited to fill it. She comes from, um, Montezusian Home Care Corporation, very talented executive assistant. We have a nice two weeks of training lined up for her, so she can hit the ground running. Rutland's also waiting and had a vacancy for a very long time, so, excited about this hire.
Okay.
Financial, financial management, um, Kelly, our new accountant's working with Kinsheriff, our old accountant, to close out nineteen, as you heard tonight from the auditors. Uh, we expect that to be done by the end of this month, with that audit happening in October, so we'll actually have a free cash number in a couple of weeks. Um, and a fully done audit by the end of October. The transition from Vadar, from Software to Vadar is almost a hundred percent complete, and it was difficult, and the staff put in a lot of time. But we feel like, uh, it was the right move, and they've done a good job with it.
Now, what's the difference between those two softwares?
There's varying opinions on the, on the software, Vadar is a local company, um, we went with them because of an uncertainty in where Software was going, they're transitioning to another management and another version.
Okay.
Um, so we would need to replace it anyway, we didn't know what that was gonna look like. Vadar was highly recommended by all the TAs that I trust. And, uh, a lot of local towns use it. We feel like the customer service is a little bit better, and, uh, long-term, it's gonna be a better option for the town.
Did you get any input from Kelly? Kelly's the new accountant?
She wanted Vadar, she said she would work with Software if she had to.
She preferred Vadar, excellent.
So now we're in line with Templeton, who we've tied accounting services with.
Good.
Mass Works Grant, so this is a, you can now apply annually for a Mass Works grant, you still only be able to apply every three years. The downside is they're very competitive and they're focused on economic development, which is not Hubbardson's strength.
Let me just jump in real quick, can you just, um, uh, because people are used to hearing Mass Works Grant as a different type of?
Strap grant.
Okay. Just, we've talked about it for years, so the strap grant, so, we've used the strap grant over the last however many years for a few significant paving projects in town, including all Westminster Road and the, the feeder, feeder roads off of that, and we were unsuccessful last year with the flag road, um, sort of application as well, so this is the annual one that we're now gonna give our full effort to, along with every other municipality.
Yes, so, um, just tempering expectations, the Mass Works Grant is heavily focused on those areas where you can get the most economic development bang for your buck, which is not a strength of our, of our town. However, it used to be very focused on public safety and helping rural towns with their road projects. So we tried to pick a project that, um, emphasized some of those strengths here. So Lombard Road, we applied for a million dollar grant to reconstruct this long road, it would take two or three years of chapter ninety money to do this. Um, and Lombard Road is in serious need of repair. It ties us to Princeton, and also some very important recreation areas. And we believe some development areas in terms of residential growth, well into the future. All things that we incorporate into the grant, we use TEC to add some professional elements to this grant, uh, they're used to submitting these, and they have a high success rate. Um, and again, emphasize public safety, so we should hear about this in October. Um, I would say that we have a okay shot at this, probably less than fifty percent, but, um, closer to fifty percent than not, so.
Hey, on this topic, so I, I sent you the bid results, uh, for Route sixty-eight North, right? I think I sent those to you, sent those to you too?
Yeah.
And then to, to Travis, they came up above what the estimate was. Have we heard any, um, feedback yet from Mass DOT, or has Travis, do you know?
Not yet.
Okay, can you ask him to look into that? Typically, and I, we do our own Mass DOT projects fairly often, and, and if it's, it's, it was within twelve percent or something, eleven or twelve percent of what the estimate was, that's usually okay, but it'd be nice to know really soon if they're gonna not accept that, because that will, A, suck and B, um, we'll have to get the word out. And if there's anything we can do, because there's a committee that approves these sorts of things, um, with a, a whole group of other projects, um, similar to one that you guys presented to, that if we can do anything we can to speak to people we already know were in that committee, or any legislators that may know people who are in that committee, that's something we wanna do really soon.
Yeah, I'll get to that tomorrow. Uh, internally, our infrastructure, our paving project is completed, overseen by Travis. This improved surfaces, if you've driven them on High Bridge, Underwood and Morgan, came out really nice. Um, if you drove them before and after, you wouldn't even notice, um, you would highly notice the difference, especially in your vehicle.
As I said, you know, for years, that was a bumpy way home, with the girls, and it's all gone. Took us, there was a, there was a birthday party at the Burton camp yesterday, and there's no more bumpy roads.
Very smooth, I've driven it a couple of times and was out there watching the cruise, um, Travis was there on weekends and his off-time, just making sure everything, as he does, is done correctly.
You can tell, you know, cause, I mean, I don't know, if you've driven it, you just see the crown and where it's supposed to be, and even other areas where the, the, the curbs there, where it shouldn't, there's, it wasn't gonna be a crown, so the, the curbs there to be able to channel the water to get to a spot where it's gonna peel off, it looks like it took, the thought went into it.
Yeah, that was awful for so many years.
So, great win for the town, just highlighting that is the entirety of our chapter ninety money for the year, invested fully into roads. They do a good job, but there's a lot of roads in town, um, so we're trying to get through the prioritization plan, we've been keeping to it for a couple of years, which is good. That's, without using chapter ninety for anything else, um. That's, without using chapter ninety for anything else, um, we're getting to them, we're we're doing the best we can to get to all of them, because we want them all to look like that.
And I think it has to be said that twice that would be done on an annual basis, in the event that the, you know, debt exclusion for, or override for what was proposed that annual town meeting. Um, to augment the amount of money that goes into roads would be done on an annual basis.
Yeah, you would do that, plus another similar project each year, instead of just one.
Right.
Uh, also, the roller's been used a lot this year, uh, to really extend our hot patching, you've seen some of that work on Lowell, Brig- uh, Lowell was not, um, hot patched, Brigham was, and a little bit of Pitcherville. Community Compact Grant, uh, this is opened again for the fifth year, so this is a state initiative to try and get towns to do best practices and improve their overall municipal operation. I'm gonna be applying this year for Human Resources Policies Employee Handbook Grant. This is, um, number one need in, in terms of my opinion, in terms of liability, and making sure that we have clear HR processes. Um, and protect the town from, from any employee issues, some things that have not been sustainable over time, just employee training, adherence to updating these policies. Uh, this will give us a, a firm foundation to move from, and make sure that we're at current best practice in the HR field.
Hey, I, so I would not wanna get away, in the way of any of the the HR stuff that I know you need, without question, but. We've had, um, you know, pretty recent experience in aligning our Community Compact Grant asks with some other towns in the Quavon region, that was specifically for education that we had before, that we got. Significant amount of grants for the QEMP and other stuff that we did there, have you ever thought about whether or not, you know, it was, um, a need of some of the other towns? To maybe pool up money for some other, uh, HR reasons with those guys, you ever, I don't know if you've ever thought about that, I just popped it in my head.
So we're dipping our toe in with Westminster as a full-time HR, as I mentioned in the budget, right now, it's currently in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Pending any changes to the budget, the, there is an initiative going around, and this isn't our own problem, HR is a problem everywhere.
Right.
Cause TAs have different strengths. Um, right now, I'm the Human Resources Director, and the Finance Director, and all those things. Um, there is some regionalization, but there's some cost to it, um, but that, that grant that you're talking about is the E and R grant, efficiency and regionalization, which is different than the best practices. What we're looking at with the E and R grant is to try and continue our economic development. Um, would love to use it for HR, but this, this town needs more revenue, as we keep saying at town meetings, so, uh, I'm trying to keep that going. Um, and piecemeal the HR together, I hate to say it that way, but.
I understand.
Patch it all together, so I'm gonna try and use the best practice, which is a smaller version, we used it last year for the capital improvement plan, which I think came out well. So it's kind of piecing together best practices, um, in that way, some of them aren't really applicable to us, this is our number one need besides. Money for longer-term solutions. And then employee recognition, so for those who don't know, I was gone for a couple of weeks, um, had a bunch of people step in to help, help lead the town, make sure things were going well. Just a few things going on, changing our entire accounting department, transitioning to various software, uh, dealing with a special town meeting. So, um, Bobby, I was surprised she was still here when I got back.
And it was a hundred degrees every day.
Yeah. And Sandy and Kelly, and, um, Lori, who's learning a new job, and still trying to cover down on some other things, just incredible amount of work from the staff, so I really appreciate them stepping up. Uh, Jeff came in and got a crash course on how much he has to sign for, just to pay the first Quavon bill, so, I know that scared him a little bit, signing off on a million plus. Uh, so I just appreciate everyone's, uh, hard work and support on that. So some upcoming topics, continuing to talk about goals, goals will be a big presentation to you at your next meeting. Um, some direction from departments and and all the good things we're gonna try and do this year.
So we said we were gonna provide, uh, any comment by September ninth for, for our select board goals.
Yes, so, I was gonna send you a note tomorrow, but September ninth was when you had said, the board would do goals and pare mine down to, uh, to an improved matrix.
Sounds good.
Working on human resource policies, department improvement plans, we're kinda tying that together with goals, and then the budget calendar. Is ready for you, will be ready for you on September ninth, and then, um, capital request, believe it or not, we're gonna start the FY twenty-one budget process, so that'll start, um, this month.
Okay, yeah, that's great, and just before we finish this, you, you, just to remind us, and I know you've said it before, but, you know, obviously we did, we did with the auditors, uh, to start off the meeting today, or generally start off the meeting. We have another, uh, shoe to follow right after this, right? Meaning another report is coming to us pretty soon.
Yes, yep.
And that would be what, again?
The FY nineteen audit.
So the FY nineteen audit.
So we're closing, so the year closes, this is just a, I know you guys know this, but July one to June thirtieth.
Yep.
We just closed in fiscal year nineteen, we're already in FY twenty, even though we're still talking about the budget. So we've closed that year out, the s- finance team is working hard to close everything out, make sure everything is, is to state standards, to accounting standards, and then we'll get a report and audit on that.
Within a few weeks.
In a couple of weeks, so it'll be a little weird, cause you just got eighteen, and you're gonna get nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
But you should see less on nineteen if we're doing it right, uh, if not, we'll have things to fix in twenty.
Okay, so we've got, uh, some appointments and rates resignations, the first being the Planning Board Associate Member.
So this, I'm gonna, there's a letter in your packet, I'm gonna throw it up on the TV for all of those in the stands here.
Yep.
Um, so the duly posted meeting of the Hubbardson Planning Board on seven August. The board voted unanimously to recommend Joshua DuBois. For the position of Associate Member of the Planning Board, so by, by, by law and state law. The board, the Planning Board gets to recommend someone to you, and then you have the appointment authority whether or not to appoint that person or not. Uh, we went through this last year as well, so the process should be familiar, so they're recommending Josh DuBois, um, unanimously. And then, they have an ex-official member that they just get to appoint, they're just letting you know, uh, John Demalia will serve on the Economic Development Committee.
So, um, and and not to belabor this by any means, but could you just, um, from what you recall, refresh, uh, everybody on, on how it went last year? And the way that we handled things?
So.
I can do it too if you want, but I'm just to, you know.
So last year, the, uh, Planning Board recommended, recommended someone to this board, there was a couple applicants. This board decided not to appoint the Planning Board's recommendation, and then there was a couple of months discussion over. And eventually went to town council over who has the authority to appoint, um, in this particular case, so based off of. Past precedents, and our town bylaws, the, the select board can appoint really whoever they want, uh, the Planning Board recommendation is just something for you to consider.
And then so we had somebody who applied for, who were, expressed interest in fulfilling that position outside of specifically.
The recommendation.
Uh, of the, uh, the Planning Board here, so as far as, uh, so we know what we've got in front of us here, so this is from the Planning Board, uh, from the, the Town of Hubbardson Planning Board. Um, in the similar instance that we had Francois last year sort of come to the Select Board, for lack of a better way to say it, um, uh. What have we had this year come to the Select Board outside of the Planning Board, um, for, uh, you know, inquiry on this position?
There was a couple of applicants that we forwarded to the Planning Board, uh, for their recommendation, um, this is what we got back.
Okay.
So if you did want, uh, those other packets, and that, that I messed up, I should have.
No, 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 I was just wondering, I mean.
Or brought them, to, they can come here and and talk to you as well.
Hmm.
Um.
Just wondering, um.
Okay.
So you need a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion to accept Josh DuBois for the position of the Associate Member of the Planning Board.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Yes.
Want to do the other one too?
Does that one need to be, uh, needs a motion, Ryan?
Uh, if you wanna do it, just in case, I don't think you need to, but it doesn't hurt, give it your blessing.
We can do it. Make a motion for John Demalia for the position of ex-official member of the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And now we have a wage authorization for Iris.
So, so we mentioned Iris Rivera is our new assessing assistant, we are, uh, notifying you of her appointment to this assessing assistant position. At D one rate on our FY twenty classification plan for thirty-two hours per week. Um, and just to remind folks, there's a big jump on the line item in terms of this budget, we are getting sixty-five percent of it paid by Rutland. So that comes in as departmental revenue, so although our line item went way up, the revenue offsets it on the back end for a net. For neutral standing in our budget.
And this, this would be effective September third?
September third would be the first date.
With two weeks of training.
Starting on the third.
Starting on the third.
So you would be voting to waive your notification period.
I make a motion to waive the notification period for Iris Rivera for assessing.
Second.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, so it, looks like our next item is, um, executive session.
So there's, um, some executive session minutes, o- occasionally you need to review executive session minutes that haven't been released. So that would be what you're doing, you can come back into session after in order to approve those in public, or you could finish the agenda, do the executive session, and bring the minutes to the next meeting. It's up to you.
We've only got a few of us, and and and, um, Chris wasn't around quite yet, so can we just push this off the next one, do you mind?
The whole thing?
Yes.
It's, it's your show.
Well, when, when you say the whole thing, what do you mean?
The executive session minutes just being fully pushed to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Unless, oh, well, actually, let me, th- is there anything in there pressing that has received, um, outside interest that somebody's really pushing to get released?
So, I did a lot of research on this today, in case you ask, so, if someone did ask, which they haven't, then you have ten days to give it to them no matter what.
Okay. Sure. Yeah.
Um, unless there's a compelling reason why not to keep them posted, so in executive session, we'd be discussing whether or not these minutes still need to be held, cause at one point they were.
Yeah.
Cause they were about an employee.
Yeah.
Um. So you go into executive session to discuss that, if there's no compelling reason to keep it, then you would let them out, or you could hold it again, but you need to review it every so often, so that it doesn't appear to be holding back any minutes, for any reason.
Okay, unless anyone has a problem, I'd rather just push it off till the next time. All right with you?
It's fine with me.
Okay, Chris, you, do you mind?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Be on the next agenda.
And matters not reasonably anticipated that year, I I have none, you guys have anything at the table here that, uh, popped up in your head?
No.
Okay, public press? Nothing? Ryan?
Nope.
Bobby?
This cucumber is in Swiss charred from the staff, if you wanna take it on your way out.
Will do.
It's right to farm community.
Okay.
Take a motion to close the meeting, or?
Adjourned.
Adjourn.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, adjourned.